Lakshmi, the heart of any business is finance and the report of its well-being are the financial statements. And we as started accountants are the ones who certify this. Isn't it marvelous?
Yes Vivek, well said. To enlighten us further on the role of C A in transforming India, we have a very prominent personality, the best president of I C A I C A K Ragusov. I request the chairperson of Sikasa Bangalore, C A Divya Maam to present a bouquet.
Good afternoon friends. Are you all ready to hop onto the technical sessions? Good. Friends, I have been invited to speak on role of child accountants in transforming India. I think this is something which is very relevant, very important for all of us. Because I think as child accountants and tomorrow all of you will be child accountants, would play a very important role in transforming our country. Having said this, let me take you through the India's economic story. So as you're all aware, the government of India is keen to make India as a five trillion dollar economy by the year two thousand twenty-four. All of us have been reading about this. The Prime Minister has been stating this in all his rallies. We're seeing it in the papers. Every government department is talking about it. But one thing is sure, India is moving from an emerging economy to an economic powerhouse. Friends, when you travel abroad, I'm sure many of you who have traveled abroad would see, when you go to a country and then you want to exchange your currency, you find that the Indian currency is not listed in any of the boards, the exchange boards that are put up. Whether you go to US, whether you go to Europe, whether you go to Africa, wherever it is, Brazil, you find that the Indian currency is not there on the conversion chart. It's only dollars that are accepted, that is only euros that are accepted. And many a times when we travel, we realize how is it our currency is not traded internationally? So what is very important for us to understand is that yes, if this has to happen, India has to become an economic powerhouse. Only if India becomes an economic powerhouse, our currency would be traded in all the exchanges, foreign exchanges around the world. Now that the government has laid out the roadmap to see that our country becomes a five trillion dollar economy, I think we as child accountants can play a very important role. Because child accountants, can we all say that we are partners in nation building? The Institute of Child Accounts of India has put in lot of efforts to build this profession over the last so many years. So I am very confident that all of us put together and all of you especially the next gen C As can help transform India. Let's quickly understand, trace the timeline as to what is happening in the Indian economy. I joined the C A profession in the year nineteen eighty-seven. I qualified in my first attempt. Qualified in the year nineteen ninety. The moment I qualified, we had the Gulf War. I'm sure many of you would be aware of the Gulf War. In this particular scenario, the economy of the country was not doing well. Nineteen ninety was when the foreign exchange reserves were at the lowest. We had just revenue, we had just balances in our foreign exchange account to extend of paying one month of our export bill. Many of the industries were under recession. And that is when the economic liberalization took place in the year nineteen ninety when Mr. Narasimha Rao was the Prime Minister and when Mr. Manmohan Singh was the Finance Minister of this country. They brought in a lot of measures. They ushered in liberalization. We talked about, you know, globalization, liberalization was talked about in the year nineteen ninety. And we were all students, C A students coming out of the profession, getting into the profession. We were all wondering whether we have got into the profession at the right time. Let me tell you friends, it was magical. Lot of initiatives was taken by the government. Policy initiatives was taken by the government, as a result of which foreign investments started pouring in. Today, if at all you have the presence of many multinational companies, it is because of the liberalization measures the government of India took in the year nineteen ninety. The domestic markets started flourishing and there was a feel-good factor in the economy in the year nineteen ninety. But from two thousand nineteen ninety to two thousand ten, maybe about ten years, we could see this feel-good factor and that is when the boom cycle ended, two thousand ten. Then what happened? Many sectors had many challenges. Infrastructure sector had its challenges, the steel sector had its challenges. Then we had the slump in the telecom sector. And as a result of which, from two thousand ten to now, all of you are aware the kind of challenges our country is going through. So it's absolutely essential that a transformation is necessary, a rejig is necessary. Can we partner with the government to do a rejig of the economy? So that country can get back on the fast track of economic development. This is what my presentation would be about. I think each one of us can play a role in this transformation. And the reason why I've traced this timeline for you is that you need to know the background of how our economy was here nineteen ninety, how it was in two thousand ten and how it is currently. When we talk about economic revolutions, I think, you know, in C A intermediate you have a subject where we talk about agricultural revolution, the industrial revolution. During the agricultural revolution, the government of India took a lot of steps, dams were built across the countries. You know, a lot of irrigation facilities are provided to the farmers and the entire agriculture record was streamlined, mechanization was introduced. As a result of which, all of us have studied how agricultural production in our country went up. And there was a revolution that took place in our country. Then we also saw the industrial revolution. Lot of industries started operating in India. We had the public sector taking the lead. In a city like Bangalore, we have very many successful public sector come like H E L, B H E L, B E L, H M T, all these public sector undertakings started doing well. And even to this day, many of these public sector undertakings are generating lot of revenue for the country. So what I mean to say friends is that we have seen different revolutions. And I would just like to talk about three revolutions which has impacted each one of us here. The first one is I T revolution. Way back in nineteen ninety, when companies like Infosys and Vipro came to Bangalore, they were all small companies and today they generate employment, provide employment for more than two to two and a half lakh people each of these companies and they are globally present around the world. So the I T revolution brought in lot of changes. We had a growing middle class, a middle class having more disposable income. G D P kept increasing and most of the Indian software companies are recognized worldwide. It threw open a lot of opportunities, especially for the engineering profession. I'm sure all of you would agree with me in a city like Bangalore, which is flooded with engineers, there are plenty of employment opportunity. And even to this day, Bangalore is the hub for employment for software engineers. We have young engineers coming from all parts of the country to Bangalore to be a part of this I T boom that has taken place. Then again, we saw the telecom revolution, their offerings. Today, can you live without the internet? I don't think even ten minutes you can afford to, you know, get away from your telephone. Those days when we used to get our C A results, you will be surprised, the C A results used to come in the Economic Times newspaper. Mr. Jomun is here, you would agree with me. We used to wait for the C A results and then many a times we used to have someone known to us in Economic Times. We used to go to Economic Times on MG Road and wait for the result. They say the result should be announced at five o'clock in the evening. We used to go to the Economic Times office and stand at four. And they used to have this telex machines. The institute announced the results and they used to send it through telex to all the newspaper offices across the country. So we used to go there and wait in the reception and then use one of our contacts to see if we are able to find out whether we are passed or not. Then in the telex machine, once the results are announced, they used to take a printer and give it to us and we used to search for our number. Next day morning, the results used to be carried in Economic Times. Those were the days when the results were announced in the newspapers. But today, you are able to get your results instantaneously. The moment the president signs, I think all of you are aware, after the entire process, examination process is over, after the examination committee concludes its findings and the entire marks are tabulated and entire pass list is prepared, it comes to the president for approval, then after which it is notified. The moment the president signs, there'll be one person waiting to upload it so that you are able to get it in the next minute. You are able to see your result in the next minute. So things have changed. Telecom revolution has helped each one of us to become, what you can say, internet-friendly. You're able to buy commodities on the net, you're able to buy your tie on the internet, book a holiday on the internet. You're able to bank using your mobile phones, mobile banking has become very common. You're able to buy on any of these popular platforms, Amazon, Flipkart. You're able to book cabs on the phones, you're able to order your lunch on Swiggy or any of these platforms. So what has happened is that telecom revolution has brought in lot of changes. We had the evolution of smartphones and lower-cost data plants and feasibility of working anytime, anywhere. You know, when we used to go for audit, we used to come back, prepare our reports. Today, it's possible for you to, going for a bank audit, you're able to online submit your reports online, right? So things have changed a lot. We're all working twenty-four bar seven and we are able to access information at any point of time, you can work from any part of the country. So telecom revolution brought in a huge change in the country. And now what we are witnessing is a digital revolution. What is happening in the digital revolution? Today, internet is available to the common man. Even you go to a small village, you have internet access. The quality of connectivity and the cost has also come down. Data is moving to the cloud. Earlier, all data used to be in the servers. Companies used to have their accounting information in the servers. In your C A firm, you have the information of your client on your server, but now it is moving to the cloud. Why is it so? Because it's more cost-effective. Data mining that has become very common. Companies are having too much of information available with them, volumes and volumes of information. And they want someone to mine this data and find out what is important for the organization, what is relevant for the organization. And you as child accountants are the best people who can help in data mining. I think no other profession can be as good as our profession to help in data mining. And we find that lot of emerging techno-artificial intelligence, how E I has transformed the life. You go home, you want to, you know, listen to a song, you just say, can you play this song? And you have the song on your TV. So artificial intelligence has brought in a lot of change. E I will be sitting on all the tax utilities way forward. If you want to consult an expert, earlier we had to go to an expert, but way forward, if AI tool is built on a tax tool, it's possible for you to, you know, converse with the software that you're using and you're able to get lot of information on the latest editions of the High Court or the Supreme Court. Blockchain is coming in a big way. The banking sector will be implementing blockchain. Blockchain, the biggest advantage is that you will have high quality of data. It is possible for you to access data twenty-four bar seven. Your quality of audits would be better than what it is happening today. We never had the concept of blockchain, we never had the concept of artificial intelligence. We never had the concept of cloud computing all those days. And all of you are extremely lucky to be a part of this digital revolution. So what is important for each one of you to keep in mind is that this will impact the way you work. Because tomorrow when you become child accountants or today, when you are going for your article ship training, you're able to see all these changes taking place in the client's organization. You see that they're using an E R P system, you see the data is being made available to instantaneously. As a result of which, it is absolutely essential for you to understand that the world is changing. And as a result of the change that is taking place, every aspect of life today from a brick and mortar selling, things are being sold online, payments are being done on the, you know, what you can say, the digital payment gateways. Deliveries are happening in different parts of the country. And you as a child accountant should give an assurance to the management that everything is fine. All payments are being received for the deliveries being made. So you need to be a web trust auditor, an auditor who can give a comfort to the management to say that every transaction taking place on the internet is safe and secure. I think no other professional other than a C A can give assurance to the management. So your role should change. You need to understand how exactly all of you should be aware of the changes taking place. And if you see the recent trends that have happened, using technology, you've seen how Aadhaar has brought about a lot of change. Presence of paperless banking, contactless payments have become common, mobile banking. You hardly see people going to the banks today. I served on the Bank of Indian Orsees Bank for a period of three years. We realized that the traffic at the branches have reduced. We have more than three thousand five hundred branches. We found that many of the branches did not have customers walking in. You're able to download your statements, you're able to transfer funds, you're able to do all your banking transactions on the internet. U P I, seamless option and with Paytm and all these apps available, you're able to buy a tender coconut. You're able to buy a sandwich, you're able to buy a waffle. Anything is possible for you to, you know, use your mobile phones and swipe the payments or even you can hail a auto using a Paytm product. Biometric is becoming common because today what is happening is that biometric authorization around the world is gaining popularity. And in some of the advanced countries, even immigration is happening very quickly because of this biometric authentication. You yourself can flash the passport, look at the, you know, the camera and then you're given a, you know, ready-to-go ticket out of the, you know, particular immigration terminal. So lot of changes are happening and it's essential for each one of us to understand the changing trends and how it would impact our day-to-day functioning. Friends, coming to the accountancy sector, what's happening to the accounting services sector? It's growing very fast. The commerce space is one of the most attractive space. I can say it's more popular than science today. And when it comes to accounting, I think accounting professionals are in great demand. I said this this morning also. And we say every country is looking at skilled accountants. You'll be surprised to know, I have met lot of child accountants, students who have not become child accountants, been having successful careers abroad. Just a three-year article ship training, having completed your intermediate, you're getting a fabulous salary in a place like Australia. So it is possible because in a country like UK, even your I P C C is recognized. Recently, the institute has got an accreditation. So if you have done your article ship training, if you have completed your I P C C, you can take a job in any of these countries. So what is happening friends is that lot of demand for skilled accountants in all the countries around the world. There's plenty of scope for each one of you here. And there's nothing that you have to work in Bangalore, work in India, you can choose a destination of your choice. When I went to Melbourne, when I was a president, I happened to meet a girl from Bangalore. And she spoke to me, sir, Neel Channagiridhar sir, and I asked her, how come you know Kannada? She said, sir, I am from Bangalore. And I always had a fascination to go to Australia and settle down. And I'm so happy that the C A, after becoming a child accountant, I got the opportunity of coming to Melbourne. So what I mean to say friends is that you can achieve your day because everyone has a desire. You have a dream. Everyone has to chase this dream. Mahendra Singh Dhoni had a dream to play in international cricket, right? He was a ticket collector. All of you have seen the movie. His father was not keen that he should get out of his job, but this guy was not happy with the job. He said, nothing doing, let me play international cricket. And all of us saw how he became extremely successful. So it's each one of you will have a dream and each one of you have to chase the dream. So these are the industry four point zero which I have already talked about. And this is changing the way accounting and professional services and mobile services are getting into a secure environment. In addition to this friends, child accountants today are involved in lot of activities. Preparation of accounts, financial statements. You know, you should have the knowledge of punching accounts on either any of the software like SAP, Oracle or Tally. You should know how financial statements are prepared. Even though it's a duty of the management to prepare the financial statements, as a child accountant, if you are getting into industry, you should know how financial statements are prepared. You should be smart in financial analysis, you should be good in payroll management, tax return preparation, direct and indirect, so you know, you can say, knowledge of direct indirect taxes, E accounting services, auditing under various statutes, under the Income Tax Act, under the G S T Act. You should have the knowledge of under the Banking Act. It's absolutely essential for you to know under the Companies Act, have the knowledge of conducting audits under various statute. And as I said today, child accountants in India are exporting their services to various countries around the world. Gone are the days where I used to cater to clients only in Bangalore. Today, I have clients who are sitting in Europe, I have clients sitting in US. I'm able to bill them in dollars, I'm able to bill them in euros. The entire dynamics of the way the profession is being conducted today has undergone a change. So with this transformation, we have seen the lot of initiatives done by the government. I would not like to go much into the details. Make-in-India, smart cities, digital India, all this have paved way for a very prosperous and growth-oriented country. Then we have lot of foreign companies coming into, already coming into India either through their subsidiaries, branch offices, license offices, project offices. You might be asked to audit any of these branch offices, license offices. Because any foreign business having entity in India should get their account audited by a child accountant. Demonetization and various tax reforms like the ushering in of G S T brought about a lot of change in the way the Indian economy functions. I think all of you would agree with me. G S T was a game changer. Demonetization brought in the required shocks. Of course, it's debatable whether it was a good thing or a wrong thing, but it did impact the economy. But today, friends, we are all faced with the economic slowdown. What is the problem? We have seen that the second quarter economic growth has come down to four point five. Unemployment rate has reached a new high of eight point five. And there's a lower rate of capital form, capital is inadequate. Every company you are auditing, you ask them, yeah, we require funds. They're looking at funds either coming from overseas or domestic, they are having inadequate funds. Because of this, we are seeing a slowdown. The demand for products and services have gone down. All of you have been seeing in the paper. The demand for cars from July till December, every month it is sliding. All the major car dealers in the country are having a buildup of inventory. People are not buying cars. Look at flats, plenty of unsold flats in a city like Bangalore. Infrastructure, you can say the real estate sector is not doing well. So what is really happening is that that is because of the slowdown. People are holding cash to themselves and they don't want to spend. So we find that there's a collapse in private consumption and people are not ready to spend. Today, it's not very difficult for you to spend. You go to a movie, then you go to the mall, you end up spending two thousand rupees. And you pick up a good shirt or pick up a good treasure, you end up four to five thousand rupees. So today, what is happening is everyone is thinking twice. Is it a good thing to go to the mall and buy, whether it is required? So private consumption has reduced and companies have stopped investments. Let us say they want to expand, they want to invest in plant inventory, they want to open an office abroad or they want to set up an office in some other location in the country, they are, you know, keeping their investment options freeze. That is because of various factors. And as a result of this, demonetization did have an impact on the Indian economy. The real estate sector did suffer very badly, infrastructure sector did suffer badly. And we felt that demonetization did take its share of, you know, brought its share of concerns. And as a result of which, we found that excessive debts, people started borrowing heavily from the bank. They were not able to pay on time. Funds were being diverted for non-business purposes. Today, the banks are mounting with N P S. And having been a director on a public sector bank, I really know how the promoters borrowed money, used it for a lot of other purposes and they've not repaid their loans on time. And addition to this is also a global slowdown. You just surf the net, you know, there's a slowdown in US, there's a slowdown in Europe, there's a slowdown in many other countries. As a result of which, we find that the concept of globalization which we were talking about in nineteen ninety has now gone back. You see Trump, Trump is talking about only America, American citizens, you know. So every prime minister is talking about protecting his countrymen, he wants his countrymen to get his jobs. So this is, you know, against globalization. So these are some of the reasons where we saw the economic slowdown. And of course, lot of initiatives can be taken by the government to come out of this slowdown, more government expenditure. Government should start spending more, then lending rates should reduce. When they're lending money to the entities, S M E, the government should, the bank should lend at lower rates. And they should try to bring about certainty in the business environment. The government should try to have stable policies, see that the policies are not tinkered and try to see how best rural sector is empowered. More and more money in the hands of the rural people will encourage consumption and that will automatically push the economy. But the fact is that there's a slowdown currently. Can we all help? Can child accountants help? Yes, it is our duty to see how we can be a true partner in nation building. We have been helping the government, we've been working with them very closely. And it is our duty to see how best we can help the government to counter this slowdown. And today, we find that the government is taking the advice of the C A institute. We are working with the Ministry of Corporate Affairs, Ministry of, you know, Finance to see how best investments can come in, how best costs can be reduced, you know, in various government departments. We're trying to see how we as a profession can help. And I personally believe friends, being one of the most popular ethical profession, we can play a very positive role in seeing that the economy can bounce back. And there are some of the feel-good factors, all these are the feel-good factors I would not like to read. The kind of G S T filing that have happened in the last eight months, the digital payments, the Jandan accounts, all these are the feel-good factors. But having said this, I can only say that yes, each one of us here are capable enough in helping the country to get transformed. Having said this, have you done the right choice? Yes, I think you people have done the right choice in choosing the child accountancy course. As I said in the morning, you command lot of respect in society, plenty of opportunities, career opportunities. Pay packages are very attractive. Seventy-five thousand to one lakh is very common for a newly qualified C A. In the campus interviews, if you have been seeing, getting seventy-five thousand is not at all difficult. If you're smart, you can get one and a half lakh rupees. Abroad, three times the salary. You go to Dubai, you can get three times the salary you can get in India. And of course, you can enjoy working. Being a child accountant is fun to work as a C F of a company or a director of finance or a manager of finance. It's a great opportunity. You enjoy working and you can work anywhere. As I said, you have the knowledge of I F R S, you have the knowledge of working in E R P environment, you can work anywhere in the world. You can pick and choose a location and fly there and you can start working. And it's a secure profession. Whether there's slowdown in the economy, whether the economy is doing well, there's a lot of security for you. You will not lose your job is what I wanted to tell you. Here is a picture of whatever is happening in the economy and the demand for C As is increasing. Today, we have about two lakh eighty thousand C As, but we have a demand for about eight to ten lakh C As in the country. But yes, the fact is that the demand for C As is absolutely increasing. And there's a need for us to develop good ethical values to become very popular. I will not talk about much about the C A institute, but having been a part of the institute, second largest accounting body with two point eight lakh child accountants and somewhere like students. It works with R B I, C E B I, C N D G, I R D A, Ministry of Corporate Affairs. We have been associated closely with the Ministry of Finance for the pre-budget memorandum, post-budget memorandums in all the new amendments to the Companies Act. To the G S T Act, we have contributed quite a lot and we are continuing to partner with the government of India. What I mean to say is that the profession is already partnering with the government of India on various initiative at the top level to see how best we can usher in a new India. Coming to the transformation of the economy, how is it each one of us can contribute to the economy? All of us as child accountants can see how the government revenue can increase. If you look into the finance minister's speeches, they're looking at raising the G S T collections for the month. They want to bring it to one lakh ten thousand crores. They want to push up the direct taxes. The two major revenues is from direct taxes and indirect taxes. And today, child accounts are involved in trying to help the clients to pay the taxes on time, ensure that the right taxes are computed and paid. So what is important for us is to educate the clients to comply with the tax laws, pay the right amount of taxes, pay them on time. And we can also encourage a large number of people or not, S S Es to get on to the, what you can say, become S S Es of the income tax agency and pay their income tax regularly and properly. And another important thing friends is that there's a need for us to discover frauds also. As child accountants, today with specialized knowledge of forensic audit, it is possible for you to discover frauds in entities in which you're auditing, government companies where you're auditors. And with G S T being introduced, we find that a lot of revenues being generated through indirect taxes. So it's essential that we as child accountants play a very positive role in helping the government to increase its revenue. Startups, startup hub. A city like Bangalore, as I told you, is a hub for a lot of startups. Can we help the startups? Can we provide end-to-end services to them? Today, we find lot of child accountants are involved in helping startups, providing services to them in corporate accounting, tax and legal matters. You're able to assist them in incorporating companies, managing their finance. And as a result of which, we feel that each one of you present here can play a role as a mentor in encouraging the startups to become successful. All of us, all of you have seen the success stories of the startups, companies like Uber. All of us, all of you have seen the success stories of the startups, companies like Uber, companies like Ola, they were all startups. So today, they are valued so high. So the startup ecosystem is getting mature. We have a role to play and I C A started a venture in Bombay where a fifteen-seater incubation center has been set up. Consulting, direct taxes, indirect taxes, corporate laws, we've already into it. I'm sure your principles, you know, would be guiding you on this. How we can help clients to get the best of our services and advise them on taxation. And we should continue this to the best of our ability. We should try to see that they don't get into the wrong routes and we should see that we provide the right amount of support to them. Yes, digitization, we can help in a big way. Today, lot of technology has impacted, as I told you, the financial transaction. And the fintech explosion is where we can play a role. Financial services and technology getting together, I think we can play a very important role and ensure that we have the knowledge of various softwares that help us to, you know, be a part of the fintech industry. Friends, corporate governance is something very important, we can play a role. Today, lot of frauds are taking place in the country. You have seen the I L F S fraud, you have seen the D H F L fraud, you saw the Satyam fraud. You saw the fraud that took place in, you know, the P N B Punjab National Bank. Frauds are increasing. Every other day, you open the paper, you see there's a scam that has taken place, a corporate fraud, and you see that a child account is involved somewhere. I think this is something very, very dangerous for the profession. It impacts the credibility of our profession. And it's essential to see how best we can detect and prevent frauds. Tomorrow, you get into the industry, it's your job to detect a fraud, your job to see that the company gets, doesn't do any, any sort of fraud. So what is important is that, for that, you need to have good corporate governance. Companies like Infosys, as you know, a whistleblower complaint against Infosys has now put Infosys on the back foot. S C C has initiated a process of inquiring into the, to the revenues of Infosys. C E B I has mandated an inquiry to find out whether Infosys declared the right kind of revenues. Today, what is happening is many companies are, you know, the whistleblower complaint against Infosys said that the company has cooked up its revenue. The results that have been reflected are not true and correct. Much of the information was not given to the management, much of the information was not provided to the, right information not provided to the auditor. So in this era of frauds, corporate frauds taking place, corporates booking up, you know, cooking up the figures, we can play a very important role. Let us say you're working in a company and you find that the company is fraudulent, you should be able to put your foot down and tell them what you're doing is wrong. So friends, very important that we have a big responsibility as chartered accountants to promote good corporate governance. And as I said earlier, it is our job to recognize frauds. And more so, as chartered accountants, if some fraud takes place, automatically it comes to you. If you are the finance head, if you are the CFO, the first question that will be asked you is what is it you guys are doing? If the statutory auditor is there, if the concurrent auditor is there, then it goes to the concurrent, what the concurrent auditor did, what the statutory auditor has done. You saw in the Satyam computer scam what really happened. Accounts were falsified, revenues were overstated and profits were inflated. And what really happened, the share prices crashed, G D P fell, jobs of about fifty thousand technocrats were at risk. And in the P N B fraud, what happened? Non-integration of the bank, C B S, that is the core banking with Swift messages. The Swift messages were not integrated with C B S. And we found that the internal auditor had not reported and the R B I inspector had not looked into it. And it shook the banking industry, a bank like Punjab National Bank, going through such a huge fraud. The kind of impact, I'm sure each one of you would agree. What, what if there's a run on the banks? If everyone start withdrawing funds from the bank, the entire banking system would have collapsed. Luckily, the damage was able, it was, P N B was able to sustain the damage. So what is very important is that we as chartered accountants should be able to detect the fraud that is taking place. And I think it is possible for us to do it. Friends, another area where we can contribute to the transformation of the nation is trying to see how best we come out with good corporate reporting. Today, companies prepare books of account, financial statements on Indian gap. Let us say they are listed in US, you have to prepare the books, the financial statements on US gap. So you need to know corporate reporting is very important. And as chartered accountants, we can play a very important role to understand the standards, the international financial reporting standards have become very popular. And if you are able to, you know, prepare the financial reports properly, you can attract more investments because investors, let us say, a guy sitting in Japan can understand the financial portion of your company much better. So as chartered accountants, we have a role in playing, in showcasing the financial accounts of our company to any other investor abroad. So we can attract a lot of investments. So what is very important, friends, is that for that, you need to have the knowledge of I F R S. I F R S, we call it I N D S, it's a part of the syllabus. And there's a need for us to go to I F R S because more than hundred and thirty countries have migrated to I F R S. And global accounting standard would be what is the way forward. This is how the big picture of I F R S is. If you have the knowledge of I F R S, you have an international opportunity. And there's a lot of chartered accountants having the knowledge of I F R S who can get attractive pay packages. If your pay package is seventy-five, if you have specialized knowledge of I F R S, you can get a lakh of rupees a month. Today, banking sector also employs chartered accountants, a big way for conquering lot of work, forensic audits, concurrent audits, you know, revenue audits, statutory audits, because today, banks are lending lot of money. Depositors are keeping, keeping their money in the banks, banking sector is something. The Insolvency Bankruptcy Code is helping the banks to recover the N P S. This has become a big success. And as chartered accountants, we can be effective, we can play effective role in the Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code as Insolvency Professionals. Friends, coming to the last slide, I would just like to say is that you have chosen the right course. Only thing what is left for each one of you here is that, put in lot of hard work, complete the chartered accountancy course, get a degree for yourself, decide whether you want to get into practice, whether you want to get into industry. If you want to get into practice, you can get into direct taxes, indirect taxes, get into consulting. Want to get into industry, you can choose a company within the country, either a multinational company or a public sector company. You want to go abroad, whole lot of nations are before you, we have thirty-four chapters abroad. So what is important is that you need to understand that chartered accountants are in great demand. We can all play a role in helping the country to achieve the five trillion economy. And chartered accountants, as I said, can help in realizing the dream of one nation, one tax and one market. Finally, friends, what is important is that each one of you should chase your dream. I'm sure each one of us have a dream. Let me become a chartered accountant. I'm sure the dream would be different from each person. If you have a dream, you should chase the dream. You should try to see how best you work hard and try to achieve this dream. I am very confident that all of us sitting here in this hall, all of you sitting here in this hall would become successful chartered accountants. I'll be, I know, I can say that each one of you have the ability to become chartered accountants. Only thing you put in hard work. I wish you good luck. I wish you all the best. And whenever you feel that yes, you should contribute to the nation, you should contribute to the profession, I think the doors are open. As an individual, you can do a lot of things. Even to the nation, once you become a chartered accountant, you can help the poor, you can help the society. You will be very influential, be very well-connected, you can do a lot. I'm sure each one of you will contribute your best for the growth and development of the nation. And right now, let's try to see how we can all transform India and make it one of the most strongest economies in the world. Thank you very much.
Lakshmi, I am feeling great now. After listening to sir's words, I am indeed happy and proud of myself to be part such an esteemed profession.
I now request C A Panindra sir to present C A K Raghu sir with a bouquet as a token of gratitude for this motivating session. I now propose the vote of thanks for the session. On behalf of Bangalore branch of I C E I and Sikasa Bangalore, I would like to express my gratitude to C A K Raghu sir, past president of I C E I for the enriching session. Thank you, sir.
The main objective of the conference is to strengthen the bond among C A student fraternity and to nurture our academic knowledge on current topics of professional interest. This conference will be a platform to have worthwhile networking with your fellow students coming from across the country, enabling you to exchange your views and ideas for your future career.
Vivek, going by the objective, don't you think we should have an interaction with our fraternity?
Yes, Lakshmi.